Good evening. Welcome to the March 12th, 2024 zoning board of adjustment meeting of the City of Nashua. My name is Rob Shaw. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. Here on the stage, we have other full-time members of the board, as well as one of our alternate members, and I'll introduce everybody here. Actually, I'll just do that now. So again, I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board. Mr. Steve Lionel is the Vice Chair. Mr. J.B. Boucher is our Clerk. We also have full-time members, Mr. Josh Neely, Jayman Kara, and Ms. Estafe Boras is one of our alternate members. And then Mr. Carter Falk is Deputy Planning Manager with the City. We basically function as a board that provides relief for when people want to do things that are outside of the allowed standard aspects of the land use code here in Nashua. There are two different kinds of cases that we typically hear, and I believe we've got both of those, yes, we do, in front of us tonight. So I'll talk a little bit about how that works, a little bit about our logistics of the meeting itself, and we'll get started very shortly. We do have everything recorded. We ask that people come up to the podium when it's their time to speak, state your name and address for the record. And what we will do is with the cases, we'll have the first person that is the applicant for a case come up, present their case. They'll have up to 15 minutes to do that. Then we will ask if there's anybody that has testimony in favor of the application, and any individual that does will have up to five minutes to make their points. Then we'll seek to see if there's anybody that has questions, concerns, or opposition to the case that's been presented before us, and everybody will have up to five minutes for those. If we have some of those kinds of testimony, then the applicant will have a chance to come back up for rebuttal, and then there'll be one final response period from one of the people that had questions, concerns, or comments. So, and we can cover the logistics of that if we have that happen for us tonight. As I noted, we do, we basically provide an opportunity for relief in two different facets. So the, one is a variance. A variance is an actual request for something that's not directly allowed by the land use code law, and there are five points of law that need to be made to be considered satisfactory for this board to approve that case. And then we also will review special exceptions. Those are things that are allowed to be done by code, but certain criteria have to be met, and they are different than the area variance requests. Both of those do have five major points of law, but again, they are different items. We have a few other things just regarding some of the logistics of the function of the rest of the case, besides that testimony I talked about. Once that testimony is over, there will also oftentimes be questions that come from the board to either the applicant or even some of those that are testifying. But once all that completes, we close the public hearing, and we open up the public meeting, and that's where we will discuss the case and come to some decision, usually in approval or denial. Sometimes if there's special need, we might table a case where there's a benefit to get additional information or allow an applicant more time to go back and investigate something. I did note that we have the five full-time members. Unless somebody needs to recuse themselves, those five full-time members will be voting on all of the cases. But Ms. Boras, our alternate, will participate in all discussion, questions otherwise. So I just wanted to explain that. I think just also, almost everybody has a cellphone these days, so if you can please put it on silent or vibrate. If you have conversation you want to have during the meeting, please step outside because the acoustics in this auditorium are very good, and it's very easy to hear even very light conversations out in the audience. I think that's probably key for just kind of logistics. If anybody has questions as we go forward, please, you know, we can help you through this. This is something a lot of times people only do once, maybe, and so it's, we understand it's, it can be a little daunting sometimes. So, Mr. Falk, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. So we do have five cases before us, and do we have copies of the agenda out anywhere?
Yeah.
Was, was, what, you mean of...
Just sometimes we used to have physical copies, but...
Oh, no.
Okay.
I haven't done that in a while.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. But I will go ahead, and we will proceed with the first case. I'll read the basic information into the record.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Roll call.
Oh, thank you.
I thought you'd do that.
No, I just, I introduced who's here, but if, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, yeah, one minor point of business rule. I'll do the roll call. Mr. Lionel?
Present.
Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. McCarran?
Present.
Ms. Boras?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw is present, and again, Mr. Falk is present from city staff. Okay. Thank you for that. So our first case is Catherine A. Kraus and Arabelle H. Fraak, the owners. Kerry Kraus, the applicant. The address is 5 Kerry Lane, Sheet B, Lot 636. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback to construct an attached 11-foot 6-inch by 8-foot 6-inch one-story front porch addition. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 8. Is there anybody here to present the case? Yes. Again, if you could just state your name and address for the record?
My name is Kerry Kraus. The address that we're asking for the variance on is 5 Kerry Lane. My address is 3 Kerry Lane.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, so go ahead and tell us what you want to do, and...
Well, the existing house is a ranch house that's typical for the neighborhood, and presently, it just has a concrete porch on it, no roof on it, and it becomes icy in the wintertime with snow on it. My mother-in-law just moved into it. She's sitting back here, and we have concerns about, with the ice on it in particular, falling and harming yourself in the wintertime. In addition, packages that are left on the porch, or someone trying to come in, in the, when it's raining, everything gets wet. People, packages, everything like that. So one of the primary goals here is safety. Secondary goal is protection of people and packages from inclement weather. The porch itself, I presume you guys have copies of all the pictures?
Yes, we do. Yes, thank you.
So, we talked about how big the porch should be. It's deep enough so that it will resist the weather coming the full depth of the porch, which our intention is to make it about six feet deep, and that portion of it pushes about a foot over the setback, which is 20 feet. 12 feet wide. Aesthetically, we're trying to make it so it's just not a protrusion stuck on the house. It actually looks aesthetically good. The steps, then, are coming down from the front, and that protrudes an additional foot and a half, two feet out into the setback. Beyond that, what would you like to know?
We can just, if you feel like you've presented enough of your case, that's fine. We have your written application, and we can just see if the board has questions. So, sorry. Yeah. So we have the written application, and we can basically just see if the board has questions for you now.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. I apologize.
No, that's fine. Yes. Does the board have any questions?
No.
That's even better. That's simpler. So there's no questions. You can have a seat again, and we'll go from there.
Thank you for your consideration. And by the way, thank you for your indulgence, too.
Oh, sure, sure. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this application for 5 Kerry Lane? Is there anybody with, here with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody want to start? Thoughts? Mr. Neely?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of this application. I'm really in favor for the safety factor. I'm not too worried about the, the packages keeping us dry. But this does give this, the applicant and the person who lives here, the ability to age in place. It is within character of the neighborhood. It's, it's not a major incursion. You know, it sounds like the final measurements are even shorter than we expected into the setback area. Certainly similar to other properties. So for those reasons, I'm, I'm in favor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lionel?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor. I saw other houses in the neighborhood that had similar porches, and as Mr. Neely said, the encroachment into the front setback is relatively minor. The steps aren't counted in that, as far as I know. So I'm in support.
Mr. Boucher, did you order?
I'm also in support of the application, for the reasons spoken during it. And I also noticed that, I mean, this is not particularly very close to the road, but there are some homes, and I think this is one of the homes where they have a pretty good backyard, but some of the homes are situated a little further back, which this wouldn't have been a problem. But, but again, I don't think it's, it's going to be an issue, and I think it fits into the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think you, kind of, the one thing I was going to comment on, but I think you pretty much just said it, is that the placement of this home is pretty close already to the street, so there's just not really much, much way to do this kind of thing without some matter of encroachment. And I think to have a size that's reasonable, as, as the applicant stated, is, is, I think, you know, kind of balances out with that. So... Would anybody like to offer a motion?
Are there maybe other comments from the board? Okay.
I'm going to be that.
We'll streamline it here. Okay.
Yeah, I guess, and sorry, just for your reference, I kind of went back a little bit to the way we did things kind of before Zoom and also kind of opening things up a little bit more. Okay. So, yeah. So, I forgot that you weren't at the last meeting when we did that.
Yeah. Okay, very good. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, Catherine Kraus and Arabelle Fraak. The applicant is Kerry Kraus, address 5 Kerry Lane, Sheet B, Lot 636, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 20-foot required front yard setback to construct an attached 11-foot 6 inches by 8-foot 6-inch one-story front porch addition. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 8. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, being built fairly close to the front setback, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible to, for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board believes this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have no evidence that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice would be served. So I make a motion to approve the area variance.
May I give us a second? Mr. Neely, thank you for your second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? And that's unanimous, so there's nobody opposed. And one thing I forgot to mention during the introduction, we tend to say after most cases anyhow, is that there is a 30-day window of appeal, where somebody, if they have a question, if they believe this board acted in error, can file an appeal with the city. But as of now, the, you know, this board has approved your case. You can move forward, and if somebody would file a rehearing request, that you would be notified, and you would likely have to stop your effort. But seems unlikely, but it's always a possibility, and we like to make sure people just have that awareness. So, and that is a general thing. We usually do try to say it after each case as a reminder, but definitely, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact Mr. Falk.
Thank you very much.
And good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to case number two is Michael A. and Cindy L. Carter, owners at 66 Tampa Street, Sheet 70, Lot 37. The request is for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached 13-foot by 19-foot accessory-in-law dwelling unit to the back of the existing house. This is in the RB zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here to present this case? Come on up to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Mike Carter. I live on 66 Tampa Street, and I would like to get this for my in-laws, which is my wife, and her parents, they're 85, and her mother is 83. A father, he has sort of a hip issue, have a problem going up and downstairs. He still do it, but there's no one really close to them. They're like hour and 15 minutes away from us, and I would like to move them into our, basically, I'm going to take the garage, transform that into like a living room, dining room area for them, and build a bedroom on the back for them, so they can have a place to stay. So if anything should happen to them, we will be right there instead of having to travel down or, because our sister lives also at least half hour, 45 minutes away. So I want to be there since she's getting older. If anything happens, we'll be there to take care of them, because he's having a problem using the snow blower and stuff like that, because they have a house down in Gonneck. So I don't think he'd be able to take care of that, and he's getting to that age where, you know, he can't really get around as well. Going up and downstairs is also a challenge for him. This is going to be a one-room, one-level, so he can walk right through from the living room into his bedroom, have their own space, and we have an attached door, which they can, we can walk out, we're right next door, right to them. I'm also military-trained on first self-aide and buddy care, first aid, everything. So I'm military-trained on how to take care of any kind of injuries that may occur or anything that happens, and I can take care of them if needed be. Have some very nice neighbors. They seem to be pretty helpful. Anything, we all, our neighborhoods are very safe neighborhoods, so they can go walking in the neighborhoods, they can get their exercise in it. Her mother likes to walk, so that'd be a good, nice, quiet neighborhood for them to go walking in. And I'm also work nights at BA Systems, so I'm available during the day to take care of them. Anything issues they have, I'll be there with them during the day. Then my wife comes on, she works a day shift, so she'll be there also to take care of them at night. But the main concern is that he's have, shaky with his legs, and sometimes he walks, you know, as we get older, you know, all kinds of issues pop up. So I want him to be safe, and I don't think his wife will be able to pick him up if something happens to him. She's not strong enough to really pick him up. I will be there. My wife will be there at night, so if anything that happens, they'll be taken care of. I'm sure we all would like to have that for, as we get older, to have someone there to take care of us. I would like to have someone there to take care of me, even I'm older, too, because we're all going to get to that age, 85 and beyond, you know. We need to have someone close by to take care of us. So that's why I would like to have this done, so I'd move them in for this, probably this summer, so that we can start taking care of them. Plus, I have a granddaughter on the way, so they'll also be there to help out and stuff, you know. So...
All right. Sounds good. I want to check in with you. So are you aware of the special conditions? There's nine of them that are about the accessory dwelling unit that range from, you know, the dimension can't be more than 750 square feet. It can't have its own front door. It's usually something that staff makes sure they're aware of.
Yes, because we did out the limits. It should be all in there. It's under 720 square feet.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, so, so no issue there?
Nope.
And that's always a key thing.
Yeah, I think around five some square footish.
Yeah.
And they have their own access, front door, door directly into our breezeway, so we have full access anytime they need.
Okay. Let me see if the board has any questions for you. Mr. Lionel?
Am I correct in understanding that you're converting an existing garage into part of this structure?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Because I don't really park any cars in there like most garages, just storage units. So I'll be cleaning everything out of there and getting that all ready for them.
Like most people, right?
Yep.
Okay. Very good.
Any other questions? I think we're all set. You can have a seat, and...
Thanks. Thank you all very much.
All right. Is there anybody else here who would like to testify in favor of 66 Tampa Street? Is there anybody here with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Neely? Sure.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of this application. You know, he signed the affidavit. There's going to be no concerns with parking on the street. Everything will fit. It'll definitely be within character. We certainly need the housing stock, and certainly it sounds like these folks have a, have a need for a safety issue to have the family there. Certainly meets all of the criteria, criteria for special exemption, so I'm in favor of this application.
Mr. McCarran?
I am in favor as well, but I just add that where they're converting the existing garage and adding on the back, but for the change of the garage door, there'll really be no external, you know, appearance of any D.
Any other? Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application.
As do I.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm in support. You know, I think it's, it's, seems like a very straightforward case. Easily meets the criteria, and so typically with a special exception, I think it's, again, very straightforward. Would somebody like to make a motion for this? Mr. McCarran, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Michael A. and Cindy L. Carter, owners 66 Tampa Street, for a special exception from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to construct an attached 13-by-19 accessory dwelling unit to the back of an existing house be approved. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. It will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. It will not overload public water, drainage, or sewer, or any other municipal system. The special regulations are fulfilled, and we have a signed statement to that effect. It will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents. In fact, it will scarcely be visible to the surrounding area.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Neely, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? And then again, passes unanimously. Similar guidance as before, there is that 30-day window of appeal. Doesn't seem likely at this point, but it's just, again, cautionary, and if you have any questions about the logistics of the process, definitely please reach out to Mr. Falk. And good luck with your project. All right. Moving on to case number three is Lynn Rich LLC, owners, Levering Auto Group, applicant, 180 Daniel Webster Highway, Sheet A, Lot 983. The request is for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach up to seven feet into the 10-foot required right-side yard setback to construct an attached three-bay, 2,037-square-foot building addition. This is in the HB zone, Ward 7. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Godistman &amp; Hollis at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua. I'm here this evening to represent the owner of the property, Lynn Rich LLC, as well as the applicant, Levering Auto Group. The property is 180 Daniel Webster Highway, Lot 983, of Sheet A of the assessor's map. Property is zoned, it's actually, the parcel is zoned, two different zones, is HB and GI to the rear. But we're talking about the portion of the property that's zoned HB. The property has an existing Volvo auto dealership on it, and has had a Volvo auto dealership for over 20 years. Over the course of those 20 years, and just before Volvo came in, those of you who might have been here as long as I have, it was the Howard Johnson's Dining Establishment for a long time. There was one over there by the Porsche Auto. Now, there's, there was one at Volvo. Seems like they get replaced by car dealerships in Nashua. But also, over the years, Daniel Webster Highway used to be a two-lane, and then it got remodified and rebuilt into a multi-lane, which changed the alignment of the highway to the buildings. Over the course of time, the Howard Johnson's building was taken down and replaced with a car dealership building. And then, over further course of the time, back in 2016, not that that building was removed, and the existing structure, the new, newer structure, was put in place. If you go to the dealership, if you haven't been, the sales are up front on the top level. Property slopes down to the rear. You drive around back, and there's repair on the back. The garages are all on the back. Like every good dealership, they've run out of room, and in particular, need more bays. And in this instance, they need bays particularly suitable to electric cars. Electric vehicles are coming along. They require a completely different setup in the bay repair, and so they're looking to add to that building. Unfortunately, due to the topography of that land, there really isn't any other place to put it, other than where they propose it, which is at the corner and connected to the existing building around back. Those of you who went around back, you could probably locate the area and see how the land sloped off pretty significantly. This is where they have to put it. It's the only place due to that topography. Unfortunately, because over the years, the street changed, and the buildings were removed, and buildings replaced, you end up with the existing building, which doesn't line up exactly parallel to the side lot line, and you have some of, some of which is further away from the lot line than the rest. They want to make this new building, this new addition, has to have a certain depth in order to accommodate the cars and the equipment, and that resulted in an encroachment. If they try to pull the building out of the side yard setback, then you're going to block one of the bays that exists there now. If you move it back down the hill, you'll have no connectivity. If you move it back down the hill, you're a full drop down. You're going to have a lot of necessary walls to be constructed, et cetera. Those circumstances resulted in a design layout that shows that there's an encroachment, and they need to encroach seven feet into a 10-foot setback. Fortunately, for this particular property in this location, where the encroachment is, doesn't mean the entire building, it's just going to be a portion of the building. Maximum encroachment is seven feet, then down to zero. But where it's located is right on the boundary line of what used to be known as Taggart Ice, and then the empty land, which is the Landing at Nashua LLC. So in the area where the encroachment in is an area where not, there won't be any building built. And that's important to recognize when I get to my criteria. As I say, over the years, there've been a series of tear-downs in buildings, but they're now trying to add the bays, and this is really the only place to put it. So the criteria are first, if granted, it won't be contrary to the public interest. The use, which is going to be put, is part of the dealership. So the use is a permitted use in that zone. We're adding three bays. If granted, it won't change the character of the neighborhood whatsoever. It's just part of the car dealership. In the rear, it won't be visible to anyone up on the road. It won't be visible to anyone except their immediate two neighbors down in the back. And as I said, that particular area of encroachment is in the setback area for the adjacent properties. So there will always be this buffer area from the building, if it's permitted, to any other structure back there. And obviously, one of the purposes of the zoning ordinance is to promote health, safety, and welfare, and setbacks do just that. Keep the buildings from being too close. Fire protection, keep the buildings from being too close, so that's not overdeveloped, and keep the buildings from being too close, so that fire trucks and emergency trucks can get in between. Again, if you went around and back, you'll see where the location was. There's going to be plenty of access from the Volvo side to get there and to get around the building. So there won't be any threat to health, safety, or welfare, and it won't be against the public interest. Number two, if granted, we'll observe the spirit of the ordinance. As I say, the use is permitted. It won't alter the character of the neighborhood. While it is closer... While it is closer to the boundary line than the ordinance permits, and one might argue, well, it is contrary to the spirit, in this case, because of its location, there'll still be adequate space between any buildings that'll be constructed down in that area. So we don't think it'll alter the character, and as I said, water sewers available, it'll all be part of the existing Volvo building. Number three, substantial justice will be done. You have to balance the harm that would occur to the public or private interests in the area if you grant a variance versus the benefit to the owner. In this instance, if you were to grant it, there would be no harm to the public, there's still gonna be access there, there's still gonna be adequate space, if firefighters had to get in or around or emergency access to that side of the building will come from the area where they access the current bays. There will be no harm to the public, so the balance is pretty easy. Number four, if granted, there'll be no impact on the, no adverse impact on the values of surrounding properties. This area is not visible to anyone, really. We did approach the one neighbor who is, if you went back there, you saw is under construction, Taggart Ice. Taggart Ice had no objection to the location as presented and proposed. The other neighbor currently is the Landing at Nashua, which is a parcel under development, it's a very large parcel, it extends quite a ways down the road, all the way up to here, so right now it's vacant, we did not approach them, but I noticed there's a representative here, so we'll hear from that representative. But it is in an area, as I say, the encroachment that's proposed is directly adjacent to Taggart Ice. The rest of the proposed building does not encroach, and that's in the area adjacent to the Nashua, the Landing at Nashua property. So there should be no adverse impact on any values whatsoever. And then the final argument is the hardship. The property is unique, as I said, the history is kind of interesting, but what's most interesting is when they relocated and rebuilt Daniel Webster Highway, the original Hojos was parallel to the original layout of the Daniel Webster Highway, and when they relocated, it became a curve, and the lot lines that were then cut up from Howard Johnson's to its abutters, which is now Sherwin-Williams and Taggart Ice, they kind of went with the angle, but the existing buildings that had been built went with the old frontage, so you have these buildings that are not square or parallel to the side yard. Daniel Webster widening sort of affected this property in that way, and could, when they replaced the buildings, they built them so that they would face the frontage of Daniel Webster Highway in a parallel fashion. So if you go by the highway, you look at the building and it's parallel, as opposed to skewed to match the side boundary line, if you did that, the building would be angled and it would look funny from the road. So the new buildings replacing the old buildings lined up with the frontage, not with the property sideline. Also think it's a unique property in that it is an entire parcel that goes front to back, from Daniel Webster down to the railroad, and if you drove back there, you saw the topography change, there really isn't any other way. I didn't realize it, I looked at all the plans, but when I drove back there, you go back, they're going to have to put retaining walls and flatten out the area just to have access to this building, and there really isn't any other area they can put an addition to this property in that makes any kind of sense. If they go farther down and make a very large addition, which they might have to do sometime in the future, but they only need three bays, they'd have to get relief from the ordinance to be able to put a separate building detached in the zone where the use isn't permitted. So we think the topography adds to the uniqueness of this property, which the abutters on the side of the property where we're building do not go from front to back, and the other, abutter on the other side is a shopping center that doesn't go front to back, and then a furniture store, which is located in the back. So we're the only lot that goes front to back. Bearing that uniqueness in mind, I don't think there's any fair and substantial relationship to enforcing the setback requirements on this particular small area of the lot, prohibiting a proposed structure in that location, and the purpose of maintaining a ten foot setback for, as I say, lack of congestion, prevent congestion, promote safety between buildings, prevent fires from jumping from one building to the other, et cetera. There just isn't any fair and substantial relationship to that purpose and its enforcement here, it doesn't make any, there's no reason to have. We think that the encroachment is reasonable, we still leave three feet at one area, and then most of the building complies with the ten foot setback, as you can see on the plan. I think that covers all the criteria, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Hollis. Is there anyone here who would also like to speak in favor of this application for one eighty Daniel Webster Highway? Welcome, your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chairman and the Board, my name is Rob Parsons, eleven Gilboa Lane in Nashua. I'm here representing, I own the Landing at Nashua, which is a former Hampshire Chemical site, we are direct to abutter, and we see no reason to stand in the way of this project whatsoever, it's well done, well designed, and it's got a good team, and they're a good corporate citizen and good people. So I would love to stand in favor of this and hope the board...
All right, thank you.
We'll hear that, thank you.
Is there anybody else who has questions, I'm sorry, has support that would like to Is there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition to this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Anybody want to start? Mr. Leino?
It all seems perfectly reasonable to me, I have no objections.
I also support the application, the, you know, explained why the addition, what it was for, what it's needed for, and again, the special condition of the property is the topography, clearly is that, and again, I think that, it's not an insignificant building, but again, I think if you look at the scale from the street and what they're doing, again, it's not something that's overbearing or would be really noticed from the front, and again, we have support from the abutters, so I don't see any issues there.
Mr. McCarron?
Yeah, just, I also support the application, I think the two concerns I had were addressed, the abutting property owner, the most impacted one is favorable, and also I was satisfied that there wasn't an alternative location, you know, to add this addition, which was something that was on my mind previously.
All right, would anybody like to offer a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for Lindrich LLC, owners, Levering Auto Group, applicant, one eighty Daniel Webster Highway, Sheet A, Lot nine eight three, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash sixteen, Table sixteen dash three, to encroach up to seven feet into the ten feet required right side yard setback to construct and attach three bay, two thousand and thirty-seven square foot building addition, this is in the HB zone in Ward seven. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The board had discussion and found that the odd shape of the lot and the topography are two of the biggest factors when it comes into this variance. The existing building is not lined up specifically on the property line due to the changing of Daniel Webster Highway many years ago, this will have an aesthetic value as well, and there was no good alternative location on this property for them to build these service bays. We do feel this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, this certainly will not alter the character of the neighborhood, this will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, in fact, we've heard supporting testimony from one of the main abutters, this is not contrary to public opinion, and substantial justice would be served, so for those reasons, I do make a motion to approve the variance.
Mr. Boucher, second?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. Good luck with the project, and thank you, Attorney Hollis.
Thank you very much.
Move on to case number four. The Kuma Nashua LLC, the owner, one oh two dash one oh four East Hollis Street, Sheet thirty-eight, Lot fifty-two, the request is from, use variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, number fifteen, to convert an existing first floor commercial space to an apartment, resulting in a total of six residential units in the building. This is in the GI slash TOD zone, Ward seven. Is there somebody here to present this case? Obviously, we don't have any...
No one here for one oh two East Hollis? Oh, we can maybe do the next case and see if they're running a little late, how that can last.
All right, move to case number five. Is Riverside Properties of Nashua Inc., owner, Ricardo de Silva, applicant, forty-six dash fifty Bridge Street, Sheet forty, Lot thirty-eight. The request is from, is a use variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, number forty-five, to allow auto sales in a portion of an existing building, this is in the GI slash NU zone, Ward three. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record, and tell us what you're trying to do.
Good evening to all, my name is Ricardo de Silva, located at forty-six fifty Bridge Street in Nashua. So I have a business located at fifty Bridge Street, frustrated size Inc., which has been in this location over ten years. I'm here today to ask you all for an approval for a car dealer variance. This request will not violate any basic zoning objectives of the zoning ordinance, there will be, there will be no change of the character of the neighborhood or threaten the health or safety or general welfare of the public because of the nature of this business. At this location, we are already working on cars, that is not threatening the public's safe or healthy. The proposed, the proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood because at this location, there are several businesses, such as churches, paths, stores, furniture stores, auto repair garage, and auto dealers. Granted us, the variance will be a great opportunity to thrive our business, has been over ten years, and the entire business has been affected by the online market. Therefore, we need to add other service so we can keep our employees and also have a thriving business. The proposed, the proposed use will not diminish the value of the surrounding properties because my business located away from the properties line, which will not cause any harm or diminish any property values. The main goal of this request is to provide more service to our, to our current and future customers. The business needs to provide, needs to provide more service to generate more revenue, and generate more revenue, more jobs for the community. If I don't get this approval, I'm afraid to lose some of my employees and revenue. Disapprove, it will be essential for a thriving business.
Thank you. Board have questions? Mr. Neely?
Well, there, excuse me, will there be enough parking for the church folks? I was there on a weekday, and so I saw that it's a pretty busy parking lot as is, so if you add in the auto sales, would be enough room for the folks from the church to park as well?
Yes, let me open my, my map here, I think I have sent you guys a printout of the layout of the business there, so let me show you guys. So as you can see of the, the printout, my business has a fenced gated area that I'm currently not using, really, and this face of the business and the right of this, that's all my parking lot, so I have tons of space there on my part of the business, and the church was, they have two parkings on the other side of the building, and the back of my building, which I don't use because that's my entrance, and the church, they only, they only operated at night, which is nobody's, there is nobody open on that time, so I think it would be not affecting them per se, because they only open, I think, three days a week, and they always open from seven and up, I belong to that church, so I know, and, and because my business has over ten thousand square feet, so my parking, it's very, it's a lot of parking there, I think I put the measurements, I don't have it here with me, I forgot to bring it, but I think I have sent you guys the measurement of my, my parking lot.
We do see that the application indicates thirty spaces are available.
Yeah.
And I think the requirement is for twenty...
Yeah, it's what it says here, yes.
Mr. McCarron?
So I guess I'll express a concern and then a question. One of my concerns in looking at this application was to make sure that if it were approved, that vehicles weren't gonna be displayed for sale up next to the road in the glass, in that grassy area, and that there weren't gonna be signs and banners and things to that effect, so are, are you saying that the vehicles that would be displayed for sale will be limited to the parking area that you're showing on the plan?
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Should the board approve this, the planning board would need to amend the site plan, and the plan would show exactly where parking spaces would be on the plan.
All right, I think we're set, I think you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Sir, are you here to speak on this case at all? Would you like to speak in favor? Or with questions, concerns? Okay, go ahead.
Peter Schaefer, fifteen E Street?
You can move that mic up a little bit if you'd like.
Peter Schaefer, fifteen E Street?
Okay.
I'm not opposed to his application, I would like you to consider some restrictions, two restrictions essentially. The area, you know, where we are, just south of Bridge Street, it's generally referred to as the alphabet streets, you know, I'm on E Street, you know, you know why it's an alphabet area, so you have East Hollis and Bridge Street coming together and they get to the bridge over to Hudson. Just south of us, there is already a car sales place, and when they went for their permit many years ago, the city put a restriction on them, saying that they could not park any of the vehicles they're associated with into our area, into the more residential area where we live, on the alphabet streets, and it was fine, it was approved, and you know, whatever, and we had no problem with that. In this particular case, you know, it's also just they're gonna be selling cars, and the two concerns that we have is essentially, we don't want any of these cars that are related to this business ended up parking south of Bridge Street, okay, which I don't think he would do anyway, but I'm just saying, if that restriction were there, it would be pretty clear, and so that's one restriction, the other restriction is, I, we don't want to see signs south of Bridge Street, you know, that relate to the business, they could put up there, right now, there are some businesses that will put temporary signs on there, out there that stay forever, you know, those kind of temporary signs. So there are two restrictions I'm requesting, that I don't think has any impact on him because he doesn't plan on doing that, this is basically just to make sure that we feel more comfortable that there aren't gonna be any more cars parked in our area or traffic because, well, there'll be traffic, people, cars driving through, but there aren't any cars gonna get parked, because, you know, we'll be finding out what the other business was, you know, they would have loved to have parked a lot of their cars that they bring in, you know, before they sell them all over the place because they're going out of space, and we don't wanna, you know, we want to sort of preclude all of that if that should ever happen. So there are two restrictions I'm requesting for, you know, one is that they don't park any of their business related vehicles south of Bridge Street, maybe south of Bridge Street and north of East Hollis. north of East Hollis. I don't know how you, I don't know what the restriction ought to be in size, but our area, and also no temporary signs. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that we might, maybe others have. So, I mean, one of the things, I think what you're asking for is actually stuff that has, is actually essentially what we might refer to as off-premise, or it's not part of his property. So, essentially, he's not allowed to do that anyhow without special permission? So, I mean, other businesses might be doing things like that that are really not necessarily allowed, but I think.
I agree, though. Like, the reason I bring it up is because the city has already put a restriction on other car sales businesses in that area for the same reason.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we're, there isn't enough parking there to begin with, so we don't want to end up with more parking issues. And they do put, you know, some of these businesses, they put these temporary signs up everywhere, just if something said, "Don't do that," and if he's not planning on doing it, it really has hopefully no impact, but people will know that they wouldn't be doing that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Paul?
Actually, he can do a temporary sign as a new business. He can do a temporary sign for 30 days. But I think you mean the, the little flags that stick up on the ground. Those attention, get, attention-getting devices, things like that, those signs, we don't allow. But he can do a temporary sign, and he also can do a, obviously, a, there's a ground sign for property with all the different tenants. He can have a panel on that, and he can also have a sign on his wall as well. That's all by right.
I would say I also don't care whether, what signs he puts up north of Bridge Street because that's where his business is. It's just into the, you know, the more residential areas. I mean, we're not crazy about having that stuff come, come up.
The signs that he is allowed, just have to be designed.
Well, you guys have to work that out. I'm just telling you what our concerns are. Yeah, thank you very much.
Anybody else have questions? Okay. Yeah, he can. Oh, yeah, yeah, good, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Sorry. Just, just to be clear here, I'm not intending to put any cars outside my gated area, just to be safe as well, you know, so I don't want to be having a lot. As a matter of fact, even though my business away from the, from the road, at least 500 feet, okay? And I don't know if you, one of you guys ever drove that way, I don't have no sign there for my business. I have only a sign on the, on my business itself since, since like, probably three years ago. The majority of the business we generate now is from online anyways, so if you're going to be selling cars, we're not going to post that on the front of the road. That doesn't work anymore. In the old days, old days, we go, drive around to find the cars. We don't do that anymore. So, everything is online on the website, so people these days, they, that's how they buy cars. And, and I know that what he's talking about because in front of the, on the my, on the business, in front of my business has a, a place called, it's a gym, it's a very big gym there. And then on that, on that land on the left side, and I see people pull like cars there back and forth. And I believe people doing that is the people that has this small dealership on their area there. I don't know if they're allowed to do that. I'm not going to do that because I don't need to do that. My business is well-known, so just want to be clarified.
All right, thank you. So, you're welcome to come back for a final, you don't have to, but you're welcome to?
Peter Schaefer, 15 E Street. I, I think we understand everything that's going on. The concern I have is, for example, there's one business in that area right now, not his business, but there's another business there. What they do is they take their business truck, it's got a lot of their signage on the side of the truck, and they park it in front of my house because, you know, cars coming across the bridge can see it better. What I'm saying is I'm trying to keep that stuff out of our, the residential area if I can. Thank you.
Okay, quite understandable. Thank you for your concern. All right, that closes the public hearing. We open, go open the public meeting. Any first thoughts or comments? Mr. Neely?
So, that's a fascinating complex. That was my first time in there, and that is a rambling complex in there. You know, when I first went in there, I, I thought the applicant was Serrano Auto Sales, which was off to the left there, and, and so I'm looking for the signage, and it turns out that's not what we're looking at. So, so there already is an auto dealership in here. I don't think it's going to change the character at all. I, quite frankly, all, all that I heard from the applicant was, was best-case scenario. He's going to have the cars locked up away, it's online sales, there's already no signage. You know, he's, it sounds like he's very cognizant of the neighbors and their concerns. I, you know, I really think that this is a, a great application, even down to there's enough parking for the church which he attends. So, I'm, I'm fully in favor of this application.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. McCarren?
I, I agree with Mr. Neely's comments, and I would just add, my, my big concern, as I noted, was this is a gateway to the city, and I did not want to see cars all over that lawn area for sale, and the banner signs and the flags, and so I think he's satisfied that concern.
Somebody like to make a motion? Mr. Neely, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Riverside Properties of Nashua, owner Ricardo de Silva, applicant, addresses 46 to 50 Bridge Street, Sheet 40, Lot 38, requesting use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, number 45, to allow auto sales in a portion of an existing building. This is in the GI slash mixed-use zone, Ward 3. The Board finds that this variant, this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. This property has been used for multiple commercial venues over, over the years, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. The Board thinks that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We have no evidence that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. The testimony we have indicates that there would be essentially no impact on the surrounding neighborhood. The Board finds that it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served, so I make a motion to approve this use variance.
Thank you. Second by Mr. McCarren. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously. Good luck with your conversion of your business?
I, who seconded the motion? Mr. McCarren? I didn't see that.
So, I, so.
They obviously didn't show up, so.
Yeah, I, I think we should table the case since we don't have any information. We know sometimes it can be extenuating circumstances, and so. Six. I'll make a motion that we table case number four, Kuma Nashua LLC, 102-104 East Hollis Street, to the March 26, 2024 zoning Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that passes unanimously. We do have two sets of minutes, I think. Oh, actually, we'll do regional impact first. Do we, anybody see any concerns for regional impact for the March 26 meeting? We have just three new cases, and the.
One holdover.
One holdover, and now technically we'll have a second holdover. Yeah. I certainly don't see any regional impact.
I don't either.
No. Okay. Seems to be concurrence from the Board. Okay, now I'll go to the minutes. We have minutes for February 13. Does anybody have any feedback, anything identified, issue with those minutes? Somebody like to make a motion for February 13 minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of February 13 as written.
Is there a second? Mr. McCarren, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? That passes unanimously. And then we have the February 27 minutes. Any, anything identified there of concern, corrections, et cetera? All right. Would you like to make a motion? Mr. McCarren?
I just said so moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't actually hear that. Second by Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor? And that passes unanimously, 5-0. Don't think we have any other business before us tonight? Okay, move to adjourn at 7:30 on the dot.
All right.